Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Olgin.
For approval or with tonight's agenda, any additions?
We'll just have one item under the council payable, and that's a progress payment for the street project.
I'm going to go approve that addition.
I'll second.
Move to approve in a second with the addition. All in favor say aye. Opposed, that carries and takes us to approval of council meeting minutes of September 25th, 2018. Anybody see any additions or deletions on that, corrections?
Motion to approve.
Motion to second to approve. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, that also carries and will take us to finance and budget. That's the council payable in front of you and additional listing, would you?
Yep, this additional listing will be to Edge Contracting, our contractor on the CIP project. It's for all work, materials, labor that has been approved by the city engineer, and it's in the amount of $266,196.88.
Is that a partial payment there, or?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a progress for work completed.
Any other questions about the council payable? Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That will take us to general business. First item under general business tonight is a variance at 414 Fifth Street Northeast. The planning commission held a public hearing to consider a six-foot variance from the required 10-foot separation between structures as per section 1375.05. The applicant, Rich Nicole Vally, would like to build a 12-by-20 deck if approved. The planning commission is recommending approval of the variance as requested. Council action requested is to approve the six-foot variance as requested. Have we moved it over, Rich?
Wouldn't step on the back door and step on the deck.
I heard that was one of the problems.
P and Z didn't have any issues, any concerns?
Alright. Any other questions for the applicant?
It's not going to be a bear's flag on the deck or anything like that.
There'll be a pole in front here.
Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Thank you. You can stay as you like, or you can leave if you'd like. Next one, under general business, it's conditional use permit. Big Mother's Auto Sales, 302 South Main Street. Conditional use permit. Brandon Chatfield and Bruce Handmeister, which I had not met, Mr. Gaines, I guess, have applied for conditional use permit to operate a used car lot at 302 South Main. The planning commission held a public hearing on October 2nd where the applicant's property owner Gary Johnson and members of the public commented on the CUP. The public concerns were mainly on the property, property owner, with limited concerns regarding the business. The planning commission is recommending approval of the CUP with the following conditions. Vehicle parking shall not hinder or block access to the properties and also storage of newly used tires, no repair work except for attached listing provided by the owner. Do we have that listing tonight?
He is just going to do eliminate anything that would contain any fluids.
That's pretty much everything.
Yes, that's what he's, he said.
What, what's that?
The fluids, that you're not going to do any repair that would involve fluids.
But we would do parts, but it would still be parts. We would still service vehicles, just don't, nothing that contains any fluids that would spill.
Any pressure washing of a vehicle?
No, no, no.
Why would you plan on doing the parts?
What's that?
What would you plan on doing with parts if you had put new parts in the vehicle?
In the, there's a, an old car wash bay at the, at the place where it leased.
And things have to be done in that, in that car wash base before you use that?
Well, let's go through.
No.
We'll get through the rest of the listing first here. Hours of operation will be from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Vehicle shall be parked 10 foot from the right away. At no point should it be wrecked or an optimal vehicle stored on the property. Conduct the corrosion protection testing as required by the MPCA, and receive the approval from the MPCA that tanks have not been compromised. And then they'd like to review the conditional use permit in a year. Mr. Chatfield, if you've got any more you want to tell us about your, if Dick has a question on the repair work right now?
Only thing I guess with the working on vehicles, I don't see an issue with it, but I know some people have. Like, so we're eliminating anything that's to fluids, transmissions, radiators, anything where fluid leaks, we're just shipping it out. We won't be doing anything, but a wheel hub, a wheel bearing, something that can be done, right there, we'll do it ourselves. So we can for most of the life, so I can do all that small things. I know I brought it up to the last meeting. We're, our goal is to be like a 39, 29, 99, an undercar lot. But we want them safe, we want them roadworthy, and as fast as we can get them before we go out for a sale. And that, that all comes from us doing a lot of minor repairs ourselves. We ship them out, the fees for that, I just, so that's why we do need this part, what we can do that stuff.
There is a drain in that car wash.
Correct.
So, don't you supposedly have to have an explosion-proof tank in there so no oil or anything gets down it? And I know what you're saying, you know, but I, I just, you know, accidents happen like anything else. If you get oiled out in there, you know where it goes, so.
If you wash a car, I mean, oil can leak in there too. I mean, I, I have no intention of working on anything, so I mean, that has oil contaminants at all. I don't know, I get what you're saying, but if I wash a car, it could have tarred from a freshly done road. I mean, the drain was there for a car wash at one point. You know, changing out a mirror on a car, putting on, you know, a fender, changing out a headlight bracket. I mean, it's all minor stuff, no major repairs. Stuff that could be done outside too.
Our county code does not allow our garages to, they cannot be tied into the storm. So anything, or our sanitary sewer. So anything in a garage, just a car parked in there not being worked on, has to be, go into its own backyard or, you know, air out someplace there to an open space. Can't be tied into anything that's combustible or any area that could be considered combustible.
The other issue you've got also is that we'll have to go through a change of use permit through the county building department, because it's going from a car wash to a repair facility. So it would have to go through a code review to look at electrical, plumbing, all those type of things. The code requirements are different from that than it is just for a car wash.
Well, this wash, Gary, might have to make a video.
I'm just telling you with the loss.
But even a vehicle being parked in there, if it's someplace where a vehicle be parked, if there's a leak in a gas tank, that is the reason they don't even allow garages. They're not working, they're not even washing on them. But that's the code, and that's the reasoning behind it, is because you could drive a vehicle in with a leaking gas tank that could cause it.
Do, the owner, Gary Johnson, do you have the prop, do you know if you have the proper?
There's a trap, there's a, there's a.
The explosion-proof traps in there?
There was required.
Okay.
Sean, is that something you want to close off, or not the drain?
Well, I think we'd have to look at it for sure to make sure, if it's, if the explosion-proof trap is in there, then they're fine. That's just required, most people don't want to spend the money when they're putting in a garage, so they'll daylight a drain to a backyard because the explosion-proof trap would be an expensive endeavor to dive into, so they just air it to their, daylight it to their backyards. But they cannot be tied into any sanitary, any storm sewer, any, they could carry the fumes down the line.
I think you'd want to check and see if it's operable.
We'd have to make sure everything's up to snuff.
No matter what, it's got to go through a change of use permit with the Homestead County Building Department, which they look at all those things for Sean.
Do we have any, in our packet, we have a letter of concerns? Do we have any letters that are being overwritten or comments that we need to hear from anyone? Be it a mayor or an owner of the property or anyone?
So who contacts the county? Just curious for the change.
They have to get a full permit, it's a building permit.
Okay. Then the city, you guys will get a copy of that?
We actually will issue the zoning certificate.
Okay.
We'll be working with them.
It's not a public hearing, you want to go on, anyone that wants to say something? Be it the owner of the property or, you know, anybody that's been with it, just speak now, you know, please.
So mayor, if I can just say one thing, just Gary, be aware, if you go to the building department for a change of use, you're probably going to make any anti-tanks. So the Minnesota State Fire Code requires that you either pull the tanks when they're out of use for more than a year, or you abandon them in accordance with MPCA. So if you go there, just understand that those tanks aren't going to be there.
Not right now, it is November, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So just so you're aware.
And we did, and the corrosion test came back clear.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if the corrosion test is good or not, the tanks have to come out, so.
Got one year from the date you?
One year from the date that they were last used, so you're considerably over.
Have you sent your corrosion test up to the MPCA yet?
I'm not certain if Matt did, but I have a copy for you if you'd like.
From the MPCA?
No, from, from the, from, uh, that, that EKAS has chosen out a lot.
I'd like to have Matt send that to the MPCA if you would, please. I'd like that.
I asked him to do that this morning, I wasn't.
I know that's his job, to do that stuff, but I'd like to, they've kind of got the final say on all this stuff.
Greg House, Fort Hills, South Main, major property owner on Highway 60 here. I'm opposed to a conditional use car lot. Add on, I'm one of our other P and Z meeting as well. But they do have to abide by the guidelines, and I think Sean and Vance, you know, explained that. There is a code that's in the county under section 4714 of the building code. Fuel tanks, I think, are a bigger concern for our whole community, liability concern for the taxpayers of our community. These things were supposed to have been taken out within a year's period of time after they were abandoned. That's never been done. I would recommend to the city council that this is not allowed as a conditional use permit until those tanks are taken out. I don't feel that even that Gary says it, he'll do something, that that's good enough in his past history. He never follows through and gets anything done in a timely fashion anyway. You're always forced to take him into court. It was been a building project that he was supposed to tear it down by a certain time, that did not get done in a timely fashion. The city had to take it to court, pay lawyer's fees, staff time, and then had to have another new, to tear the building, that he did not do. He does not follow through with any of the things that he does. That's obvious with the back taxes that's holding out this part, so does anything else. And if the rest of us in our, in the community, as far as business owners, did pay taxes, the city would have a hard time existing, making their buildings and so forth at the same time, if you allow all the businesses in the community not to pay their back taxes, so.
Thank you. Do you want to?
I don't know what building you're talking about.
The building we're talking about is Polizzo, building on 301 South Main Street that you were supposed to have tore down by?
You got to take me in court.
That's correct.
I, I don't know, that's not, that's not.
By May of 2000?
That's not true, Greg, that's not true.
Alright, let's, let's stay pertinent to all the projects.
I'd just like to explain a little bit to some of the council people that happened when here and, and just explain what's happened to be over the past few years. First of all, over the past 30 years, I've paid over a million dollars in property taxes. In April of 2010, my liquor license of 23 years was revoked because of failed compliance checks by two of my employees. I never sold to a minor or had any liquor interactions personally. Yet, two city council members and the mayor ran my good business name through the mud, and the newspapers which were around the city portrayed me as one who sold liquor to minors. My lic, my revocation will be there. I lost my livelihood and none of my families. I had to sell the property where the liquor store was located, it has a state statute. I had to sell my home that I hadn't built, and my sons grew up. I lost my retirement, I lost my credit, which gave me the ability to do business transactions. Most of all, my reputation was ruined. And my family had to read what I supposedly did without any corroboration. I owe back real estate taxes on this property, yes. I entered into a confessionary judgment with Mr. Kelly, which allows me to pay it off over a five-year period. I gave this information to the city clerk. I just paid off over 60-plus thousand dollars of property taxes on the Johnson building. So I'm slowly digging myself out of the hole created eight years ago. I wasn't blessed with being second or third generation money. I had two sons in college at the time at St. John's University. That's 45,000 dollars a year per son. I had to make the decision. I gave other bills or paid further education, which was our goal. I chose to continue to pay for their college education, so they had no benefit on graduation. I could go on, I have some other things to say about me, Greg, but I'm not going to do that.
So Gary, did I, did I understand that you're, you are planning on getting those tanks out, you said?
Matt Geekus, yes, he just gave me a revised bid because we decided to pull the can down.
Okay.
We decided we want to pull out, pull out the footings, and he said, no, we're just going to pull it down to ground level because of what I would have done with the cost. Used to be about, a year to two years ago, if they would have taken the can down, just going to steal it, steal it down to about, what, 80 bucks or whatever compared to, I forget, 35.
So this is something that can be done in the next couple of months, you think of?
November is what we're shooting for, yes. And he said it himself, yeah, we were just, he was getting a couple extra bids for excavation, it was just going crazy. It went up about 35% from April, so, yeah. But Matt Geekus has done, he's done, like, tank stuff for a few years. I actually inherited these tanks. I had, I had leased it back, sold, sold the, the business equipment back to 2001. And then I sold it to another gentleman, and it just, and the last person, Ann Anderson, had it. And she kind of stuck it for, for a bit of money, but, so, so they lasted. The best eight years have been, have been tough, and, you know, I was not real happy with the, the P and Z meeting, where basically it was a Gary Johnson bash, and it has nothing to do with these people here. They tried to buy the bar from me, but it took three attempts to get a correct liquor license application. And they finally decided, we'll try something else. Any other questions?
Anybody want to add to that?
Gary, I have a question for you.
Yes.
How come it took you so long to take the tanks out? Most people, they, they have a year or two after the business is closed?
You know what, Matt Geekus worked with me, and, and I haven't talked to Matt for a while. But I was also going through a divorce, not my choice. And financially, it was just not feasible. It's going to be 45,000 dollars minimum, but by the time everything is settled and then resurfaced, will resurface next, next spring or summer. That's, that's the reason, they just, they just kept allowing me, allowing me to go on. I mean, it's not like they're letting Steve's auto, I mean, you know, they have, they have a tank over there that's, you know, that's partially under the, under the belly. So, and, you know, our former?
Oh, we're not caught for that.
No, I know that, but I just said, yeah, so, yeah, it's about that, yeah. We just, just didn't, if I did, if they didn't request it, that was inside of it, but that's the only reason.
I guess I just had the problem, you know, other businesses and stuff, they basically have to apply by the rules and regulations. This happened, this started back in 2008, I believe?
Uh, would have been, actually.
With the business?
I tried to revolve it in 2010, so, you know, they've been.
Well, still, still, no matter, it's still, it's still eight years.
I have no excuse, yeah, so, so now, yeah, they're, they're, you know, November is what Matt Geekus said we could get them out. I have no excuse.
Other people have hardships and stuff too, at all, but, excuses are excuses, but it just don't ring well with me, you know, like, why, why? You can get away with it, and other businesses don't. Same, same, no, I love where they, we pulled them out too, in a portly fashion. No. If, if it is over there, has the same problem as you, then we'll be looking at that too. I just have a hard time understanding it.
I don't think anyone has a hard time with Brandon or his uncle. That's never been brought up once by the P and Z or anything else. I didn't realize you had such a rough life here, and sorry about that for you. Do you want to add any more conditions to this?
I guess my question, my only question, I don't have a problem with any of this really, except for the tank thing, and I'm just going off of what Mr. House said. Do we put a limit on their guaranteeing that it gets done at some point here?
I said November.
I mean, is that in there already, or is it?
My question is, help me, help me approve it until the county comes in. We can't, to me, we can't approve it until the county comes in. Because, to me, it's going to have to be tabled till we get standings back from the, or anything back from the county.
Well, I guess, I get where you're coming from, but what would, what would preclude us from approving it? Obviously, they, they would be shut down by the county if they were unable to pass something there. That wouldn't, or shouldn't preclude us from offering up the conditional use permit, I don't think. I mean, I mean, either way you look at it, I don't, it's really six, one half dozen of another, because obviously they have more permitting to do, but I, you know, I don't know if.
Yes, that's what I think, it's tabled. Well, one thing we need to see for sure, if we're going to go through with this conditional use, we need to see that back from the MPCA about the corrosion test.
Those are supposed to be a monthly report, they, they are monthly, they're supposed to be turned in, so they would be record of whether they're up to date or not.
Unfortunately, though, MPCA said that those tests haven't been done since 2008, so they don't have nothing to go on. That's why P and Z asked that that get done.
That's right, we'll start with that. I'd like to add the condition that I like them tanks stuck by a non-biased party. I don't think that's Gary, and I don't think it's me, I'd be hard to Gary, to see what is in there for sludge or the depth of it, so we have a place to go from there. Then, I want to hear a report from Ron about that car wash, if you plan on doing anything in there, that the proper stuff is in there for what we're going to use it for. I have one other question for you, Gary. I know you've got a five-year plan worked out. Thank you. I know you've got a five-year plan worked out, but I also want to see, is this from the MPCA or from your guy?
That's from, from Twisted Testing.
Okay.
Those tanks, the tanks.
Want to hear back from Zach is what I want to hear.
The tanks, the tanks have been popped, so it's below the subversal.
I understand that, but if you want a little help with this, if we stick it now and check it again in, say, a month, and then another month, we'll see if there's inflow or outflow, that will tell us something too, if there's a leak anywhere or not. You understand what I'm getting at, I'm trying to help you a little bit, believe it or not, Gary, I'm trying to help you a little bit.
I understand, I'm just, I'm just telling you that, that this test that you just did is the corrosion test.
I understand that, I want it sent to the MPCA, and I want to hear back from Zach. And then I know you have a five-year plan to pay back these taxes, but part of that plan is to be current on your current taxes. I want to see from the county that you're current on that parcel. Anybody else want to add anything else? You want to add a date when the tanks come out? Because I'm going to make this thing conditional, the men, these conditions are met.
Well, Gary said they're coming out in November, so that's one month, roughly a month away, less than that.
It's 30-some days in November, isn't it?
I mean, you'd have to put a little bit of a leeway on it in case this guy gets tied up and it's a week later or something. I mean, I, I don't want to make it impossible, but I'm totally fine with everything you guys are saying, it sounds good to me.
Jeremiah?
December 15th. Is that too late?
I don't know, whatever, just want to make it realistic.
But before the meeting, Brandon, I heard you mentioning you're still applying for your dealer's license, is that correct?
Yeah, um, if we, honest in all honesty, if we can't get some kind of approval tonight, with conditions down the road, for us to at least go ahead and get our license, get what we need to go on, I mean, we're a good month out, just on our license, probably a couple of weeks for sure.
They're, they're waiting.
We've got a lot of money already.
They're waiting on that, obviously? I mean, they won't, they won't give you your license until we move? So, I mean, I, firstly, I think I'm in favor of, let's set our, let our, set whatever conditions are satisfactory to us, and get something pushed through tonight, because let him get what he needs to roll forward.
For the date?
I think so. It's arbitrary, I don't care, whatever works. Gary, what do you think are the odds of that guy getting, coming in November? I mean, I don't want to set a date, say November 15th, and he doesn't make it, and then something gets screwed over, so. December 15th, is something we throw in there to get things, I, I don't know. Whatever works, I mean, I, I want the right thing to be done for the city, obviously, and for you guys.
Let's say November 15th?
I'd even, maybe put, you think for sure he'll get out there to get it done by then, though? That's my only concern, is maybe we'd say December 1st.
It could be a three-day process.
Right.
We just wanted to make sure that, that the tenants in the other building and the liquor store, and I've already talked about that Wednesday's going to happen, so we're trying to do it Monday and Tuesday, finish up on the Wednesday.
If there's any, at the time they do that, they will do soil samples, if there's any contamination whatsoever, the age of those, I'm not saying spilling, filling, stuff like that, we're going through it or shop right now. There will be a delay for a permit to approve what you do with that, and depending on what they find at that time, could delay everything. So it might not be cut and dried right at that time the tanks come out. But I feel like we could, we could say, we're going to go forward, these are our conditions, we want the tanks out by December 1st. We need to see the soil samples back from MPCA. You know, if something comes up with the change of use permit, or something else down the road, or there's contamination, obviously, that would step in and be yet another hurdle, but that shouldn't preclude us from moving forward with this, I don't think.
So if you do these conditions, and he goes ahead and spends more money and opens up, are you okay then coming back and closing him down after he's made those, if Mr. Johnson doesn't come through with his?
Well, he can't open until he does all that, right?
Oh, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
You're saying absolutely not open?
We can't open.
Right, until everything's done.
Okay.
I think the counties have a lot to say, and, so, I mean, if the county can come within two weeks, we could have a next day.
They're two weeks.
My only question, Dick, is that what, what does it do us to table? What, I mean, clearly that hurts Brandon and, and Mr. Handmeister or Mr. Chaffs, if they cannot move forward and at least get rolling in the right direction.
Well, they can't get going until.
And clearly, it's going to take a while to open it up.
Conditions are met.
Oh, I understand that.
Listen, they all go.
Go ahead, but.
I don't, I guess, I don't have any problem with the conditions are met. Go ahead with the used car lot, but I just, until they're met, I, I don't have, I have a problem with putting a used car lot in there.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, I think our conditions here should, would say that until these things are all done, nothing moves forward on it.
I agree with all of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I, maybe I missed something, but I don't see how that harms the city.
If the conditions are met.
Right, no.
I just, you're, you're on the right track. Basically, it lets your body approve it upon the conditions being met. If all the conditions get met in one week here, they can start up. If it's two weeks, or it's December 1st that it takes, they can at least get started once they're all met, so.
But as far as anything that the state would have to say about any contamination, or anything that the county might say about drains and the car wash or anything like that, that does not need to be spelled out in our conditional use permit, or in our, into our, um, conditions necessarily, does it? Because that's just part of doing business anyhow, regardless of what we said, right?
I would just have that in there, just so it's clear to them that all conditions are met.
Do you guys know more than I do then about that? Or Sean, I don't know what all needs to be done, obviously, the tanks need to be all. Tanks need to be, they do soil samples, the cathodic reports have to be in, and monthly, and I know there's, there's financing to help with that stuff, because we are, like I said, just going through it with us, to help reimburse on some of that stuff. So if you get contamination, there is money out there to help fund for Mr. Johnson to get through doing that. But it takes a process, you have to apply for the permit if it's contaminated soil, before that contaminated soil can be cleared, where they go with it, what they can do with it afterwards, all that stuff. So that whole lot would be froze up until that time. Okay, so who's smart enough to be able to articulate exactly the conditions that will be added on to this, so it makes sense?
Successful complete, or successfully obtaining a building permit from the Hudson County Building Department. Successful removal in compliance of MPCA rules of the tanks. It's really too big what you have to talk about.
And you guys will get the reports from the county and MPCA, right? We'll come back to this.
Well, you guys, I mean, you'd have to just request them. They wouldn't come back to us because it's his property, they're going to go to him. But he would have to supply it to the city.
We're willing to move forward with all that.
On the contamination, if, if there is contamination, probably, it used to be if there was extensive contamination, they would take it out. They would take it out on a field, whatever, you know, and, and they would.
That's changed.
Now, now it's not, if it's not, if it's not a threat to groundwater, they'll, they'll keep it in there.
Unless you're disturbing it, yeah.
They will, but you have to go through a permitting map and test it. It takes, I believe it's two weeks it takes for that all to go through. And then, you're right, they, they can allow you to put that dirt back in there if it's quality filled material for you.
Do you have any problem with that?
You got it the way you want it, don't you?
Yep.
Did you, did you pick up what we were saying there?
Yep, we got it.
Brian?
I have one more thing, so let me get this clear. The P and Z have a concern about the work getting done. The P, the plant zoning had concern, there was some concern about the work being done in the garage. So, just so I understand, the rest of the council understand, you're not going to do any, anything with fluids, period? It just, so you're only going to use that garage or the old car wash for washing cars?
Correct. I don't, I don't, I don't need to go through anything more. I want to try to move forward and I don't want to have any.
Okay.
I honestly don't think it'll make a difference because for him to work on the things, you would need the explosion proof trap anyway. And even to pull a car in there, you need an explosion proof trap. So it really wouldn't make any difference on that line.
So what, what building, what building safety will do is they will look at the, the building code and the fire code. They'll determine what the occupancy is. Basically, you're repairing, you're replacing parts. So it doesn't matter if you're getting into the fluids or not, they're going to call you a repair shop. They have requirements for a repair shop that are different than the requirements for a car wash. They'll go in there and say, these are the modifications or this is what you need to do to be able to do a change of use. Or they may actually say, you need to go get an architect to tell you what you need to change. It depends on how long I want to be with it, so. So if you're going through a change of use, it's, they may make you get an architect to do it for you or they may be nice and help you out, I don't know.
Truly isn't our concern either way, as long as they meet whatever's requested. Yeah, I'm willing to move forward with that motion if you got it down. I mean, and, and how do I say that, a big motion to approve it? A lot of conditions being met, being met that were discussed tonight and added to the prior conditions?
We got a motion, do we got a second?
I'll second it.
We've got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls?
Yep. Gee.
Brad? All right. Best of luck, we hope to hear back all good results on this stuff. You're welcome to stay here if you have anything you'd like to comment. I'll take us the mayor's staff consult reports.
Does anybody have to stay? You got to be here, everybody has to. Especially Rich Rollins.
He's, he's inspired after, he's, he's inspired after coming in when he was a hand.
It was cruel.
He wants to talk to you on getting on board with him.
You want to be on P and Z? You want to be on P and Z?
They have all these regulations, but they never follow through.
Hey Martha, you either sit down or get out. Martha! Martha! Mayor's report? Yeah, I noticed you did. They're writing a letter all this time. City Lieutenant Senator Simples out of the families of Charles Holbeck, Lucille Knapp, Dustin Moan, Daniel Harbaugh, Valens Ryland, Catherine Hamlin, Bob Queasley, Mary Pearson, Colleen Rude, and the family of Jim Hale. Which, for you up here that don't know us, Sean's brother. Congratulations to South and Ray and Janet Quat on their sixtieth anniversary. Don't forget the thirty-sixth annual fest of habitat banquet will be held this, or on Friday, October twenty-sixth up to the sports club. Spoke in the woods, October nineteenth and twentieth in Racine. And Stewartville firefighters held their breakfast benefit just past Sunday. It looked like a tremendous turnout when I was there. I mean, I, I hope it worked out good for you guys because the food was good and everybody looked like they were having a good time. And don't forget their, uh, open house for firefighter week is, uh, tomorrow night at the fire station from five to eight. There's always a lot of fun activities for all the kids and the families out there. So swing in if you get the chance. And then we have manufacturers week here the first of the month. And I'd like to thank Julia and Stephanie from Seda, who worked with us in the chamber. They helped us, they, you know, they went out and they recognized all of our manufacturers. We gave you treats. One Air Force makes some delicious treats for you all. We got a little, uh, airtime with Seda. We have deed down here handing out awards to Geotech. It was a, it was a nice thing to be involved in, yeah. That's all I got. Takes a city administrator report.
Uh, reports in your packet. And as you saw at the end of it, just highlighted the new Stewartville dog park, which Public Works played a big part in helping put together. So kudos to them and people are already using it. So it's great news to see. Um, even today, we were out there for a work at the wastewater plant. And there were a couple of vehicles even heading out in the rain to use it. So it's great, great news overall. That should do her.
Any questions for the minister? Finance Director, Bill, you taking care of that tonight?
Yep, big items were already in your thing, no, uh, finance meeting, so should be good to go.
Public Works, Sean?
Uh, packets in there. The only thing I want to add is we have, since we're all experts on fuel tanks now. Ours have been pulled out of their shop. They have found contaminated soil on the gasoline side of the tank, which is more common than the diesel fuel. And it's, it's not a big area, but we have some. It is going to drive the price up for pulling the tanks, which we knew was a risk when we were doing this. And, uh, but with that news, it shouldn't be actually too much more money because now we qualify for the financial assistance with it. So you get ninety percent back on that if you're up to date with everything. Well, we're not, and that's why we're replacing the tanks, because our monitoring system has been down. It was ten thousand dollars to replace the monitoring system. These tanks have been in the ground thirty-six years, average tank life is thirty years. So we decided we're pulling them out, putting above-ground tanks, getting rid of our monthly monitoring that we have to do with that. All the paperwork's gone, make it a lot easier. But they were thinking it's going to be around six thousand additional dollars. But we would get ninety percent back if we're up to date, to date with that stuff. But we'll get eighty percent back, is what I've been told. So it's not a huge difference, twelve hundred dollars or whatever it works out to. But, but they are out, it's done, and we're waiting just to get it, block that back in there now.
Any idea, Sean, when you might start to reach back up? There's starting to be some people around town.
I'm thinking next week. It's, it's been so wet this week anyway, when I can do it, it's this way.
There's these, there's people breaking out of the street with this water and start flooding stuff up.
No, we planned on starting that next week.
Great.
It's hooked up and ready to go.
Is that, how do you do that again? Can you remind Mark, so he puts up the papers, is that every day or is there certain days?
He'll, he'll go out every day as long as there's leaves. And then as we get later in the season, he'll make it out the first part of the week. If he gets across everything, he'll wait till the next week. So he usually gets across everything once a week unless it's so far, but especially with a wet like this, it slows him down a lot. He might not get over the whole town in a week. But once he gets caught up, he just covers the whole part of town once a week until pretty much freezes.
Good, thank you.
With Facebook this year, we can advertise and try to do a better job of letting them know what areas he's in on a daily basis. And that's one thing we're going to even do, put that out there. So if people have questions, tell them to keep an eye on Facebook to know what areas he's working in. Because I know that's a, a help to all the people that want to know.
All right. Any other questions for Sean? All right, they'll take us the city engineer report, we got a project staff report in there. Any questions for city engineer? Do you have any to add yet?
Uh, nothing to add.
What?
Do you think it'll ever get back to work?
Do you think it'll ever stop raining?
You think you'll ever pull your beans up?
I need an idea from her and I can get it to work.
Yeah, I, yeah, I wish I could just flip the switch and turn the rain off and.
Good news is they're to a point that they have the base down a lot of stuff, so you don't have too much waiting to dry. Once it quits, you should be able to go for it.
Once it quits and there's, there's no standing water on the base, they already have the storm lines up. They can order concrete and go.
Thursday, Friday, they should be working on those some of the weeks.
So that's where we're at. We are really waiting for a day where we can pour concrete.
We're kind of lucky, it's only rained a couple of times this year. One time for forty-five days and not for thirty-one.
They have been great. They've been here the extra hours on Saturdays and evenings, they're here until dark, so.
I've seen them in the dark working and I've seen one the other day. They're doing all they can do and all that, but.
Yes, the one question I have for you guys is for next year's project. Um, I'd like to get your input on the early side of design. Um, if we could have a workshop before the next meeting, um, to look at some preliminary design sketches and get an idea of where we're going to go with sidewalk locations.
Well, you think you need half hour or something there?
Yeah, about half an hour before the meeting would work. Um, or come down for another night of, for a meeting.
Craig likes those extra meetings.
Sorry, Craig.
Any idea, guys, what works for everybody?
I bring my work calendar, so whatever.
What time would you schedule?
Pick something, yeah.
I'm fairly flexible.
I want to try six o'clock before your next meeting. And that meeting's at the fire hall.
What time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock before your next meeting.
Should be okay.
I think so.
That'd be okay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
That's it, we're just trying to get, um, everything closed up for winter, um, including Schuman Drive. We're trying to get that paved this year too.
They haven't got the final report on that?
No. No, with the building of Bobcat, they did not.
Yeah, we held them off. Because their Bobcat was digging out through it, we didn't want to have fresh cut out.
Uh, they, they have all their curb in, uh, they're waiting to pave too.
You get the building pretty well enclosed near there?
Yeah, yeah, that's all.
Talking the other day, they get those appliances enclosed, it's.
I think they were looking at November earlier. I don't know if they're still on schedule for November, but that was what I'd heard at one point.
We're going to have a lot of stuff happening in November this year.
Your crops included.
All right, thank you, Dana. Uh, no libraries, so fire chief, he's been waiting on like the.
I have, I have something to do, just wanted to do this. Uh, a couple of things for, uh, council. Uh, we did send a Stewartville fire truck to the presidential visit. Uh, it was stationed at Gold Cross South, which is on the north side of the airport. Uh, if you know our fire district, we actually have a district on that side of the airport too. So we were in close proximity to our fire district. But Rochester, because of the amount of resources required, asked for us to exit stage right there on the line of Stewartville and Rochester Fire District. Uh, so we were able to accommodate them for about four hours. So we had engine on the north side of the airport for about four hours, providing protection to both our district and to Rochester's district in the area. Uh, one of the things that's on my goal moving forward is to get you guys a monthly report. Uh, currently, we do an EMS report monthly, uh, financial report monthly, and then we're getting ready to start doing a fire report monthly, just on the stuff that we did the month previous. So we generally present that at our business meeting, which is on Monday night before this meeting. And I like to hit that together in the packet, just forward out to you guys. Uh, just so if I'm not here, you guys can see what's going on in the department. We're already putting together anyway, so this will be a way for us to forward it out. And I just don't know if I can get it to Cheryl in time to get in the packet, so off the, off the. So we'll figure out how to get to you with that. Uh, as everybody recalls, we had an old first response van, it was a nineteen eighty van. Uh, it's sitting at the back of the fire hall. We haven't driven it for the last year, year and a half. Uh, so it was decided by the department to go ahead and decommission that and submit that for surplus. So we've got stripped out and that van, which is a death trap anyway, uh, is over at Public Works, uh, ready to, uh, be sold.
I have taken pictures of it, we're going to put it on public surplus. But I got phone calls that brought me away, so I didn't get listed. Pictures are on my wall, so I'm happy.
All right, so now for the broken record, uh, truck one. So now for the broken record, so truck one has a major hydraulic leak. It's something about three or four gallons of hydraulic fluid, so we cannot use it at all. Uh, we can use it to drive around, that's about it. Uh, we are having it evaluated to see what the cost is to get that hydraulic, uh, issue fixed. Uh, we had Zach take a look at it from CD, I can't remember what his name, his company is. But the issue is the hydraulic line where it's at is in the torque box, which is inside the fire truck. You can't get the cylinder out, you can't figure out how to get the cylinder out. There's a pin in there that we're not sure how to get out. So we're going to have Pierce take a look at it and either give us some recommendations or they may have to do the work for us. So we're trying to grab what that cost is and I'll let you know as soon as we find out.
Is it under a million?
Uh, it's under a million, so, well, I shouldn't say that, we hope. I want to say that to be a hell of a lot more than you think it is, but mostly. Yeah. So, and along with the other part of the broken, uh, record is, uh, the committee has come up with whatever they're proposing for a truck. Uh, Bill was good enough to give us the, uh, number of questions you guys want to answer. Uh, so probably over the next month and a half, two months, we'll be putting together a proposal. So we got to give you the facts of, okay, here's what the cost of the truck is, here's what the impact is, uh, for the community, if we don't have it, both from emergency response, insurance capabilities, and then also what it will do and what it won't do for commercial insurance. Uh, so looking at what that'll do. So, well, we're busy getting that together, working with, uh, the ISO guy, working with some different things to get a presentation together for you guys, so they have a little better understanding of facts and what's going on with it, so. Look forward to that sometime in December and we'll see where we go from after that.
Any other questions for Gee?
So like any good news of all things that are working the way they're supposed to?
Yeah, the department's running great. Honestly, I mean, honestly, it's probably, I think the department's running the best spot we've been in for quite a while. Nate's one of our lieutenants, so it seems like it's going pretty well.
You weren't driving the truck when it started leaking, were you?
I was not. I was driving the truck when I ran into the garage door, but I, yeah. But that is a no way ship reform connected to the leak of the hydraulic. Just let you guys go.
We went and made the kids happy today, that was fun, that bear gave and, uh, boner.
Was that right?
Yeah.
For fire prevention week.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, I think the guys are, they're, I think they're stuck every night or every day. So a lot of guys are taking vacation off to go do, uh, the daycares, all of us schools. Uh, obviously we have to, uh, open house tomorrow night, but they're doing pretty hard this week, so.
Good, thanks a lot of you. All right, I'll take us committee commissioner, board reports, chamber economists, they got their ED newsletter in there. They got a calendar full of stuff coming up this month again. EDA, HRA, we'll be meeting next week?
It's Tuesday?
No, remember?
No, that's.
No October meeting, right?
No, that's right, not meeting till November.
Combine it with November's.
Finance?
No meeting, no report.
Library?
November eleventh.
Heartboard?
Uh, November twelfth.
Personnel? We've got a couple of things to, those are the ones these days we have to do. Plant zoning?
We met, we met last week, but Cheryl's not coming up at all or that you?
No.
We've got minutes of that meeting in our packet. Public safety, we got the sheriff's newsletter.
Calls, service are also in the packet.
Calls for service are here, anybody?
We also, uh, we did some school evacuation drills this past one. Also a neighborhood watch in the, uh, Lakefront Drive area. Well, we have about eight neighbors that came to that. Also, we've had some requests for some security process from some old businesses, which we'll be assisting with one of them, so we'll stop out there tomorrow. And then, uh, we also have a meeting with schools tomorrow in the morning. And that's also for school safety, so I know we have some representation here that's going to go in there as well.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Finance, city, so. So I have it.
Any questions for Mike? I can't help but ask.
I can't help but ask you, Mike, you know, when you, traffic stuff on here is eighty-three, is that for the whole month?
Yes.
Just on Main Street.
Just on Main Street?
Everyone's-
I don't know if my math is correct, but you know, that's less than three a day. You are, you gotta be kidding me.
But we also take what we're, fifty calls of service are a little low, so.
I, I realize that, but I also realize that three a day? Come on. I can see three, when I drive a bus in the, in the morning, I can see three at the morning drive.
We should work it then.
I got my hair dryer.
Mine is every time it's good, it's a dog.
I, I was basically at the quick dip today, and I swear to God, that semi had been going about fifty mile an hour when it went by my quick dip.
Next time you see one like that come, step out and go like this.
I couldn't catch it. I couldn't catch it. He didn't even think anything of my hair dryer either. Gave me the, oh, you know.
You're working on it, Dick?
When they have, I mean, we see that, but they also put four hundred fifty calls of service, one guy here. It's a lot, I mean. You know, I mean-
You're moving in the right direction, Dick.
Which direction is that?
They're working on it.
Well, I don't doubt that. I just have a hard time, you know. I'm not going to, I don't like to wait till an accident happens or somebody gets killed, if you know what I'm saying. I wish we would. You can always wish in one day.
Be careful what you do there.
Don't see them at home.
We appreciate you looking at that every time, but.
We got a bit more, so.
All right. Public Works? Now, roll call.
Uh, no report this month.
Transit advisory committee? Not again. Communications, we got an LMC regional meeting in Rochester. Dinner, the whole works are there tomorrow. Oh, that's it. Tell them, Paul, you missed it. Charter communications, the upcoming changes?
No, not lower.
Southeast Minnesota together in great. Is that for all of those buildings?
No, no, mine's in, mine's in Tyne or Tyron or something.
Oh, did it not come through?
It came through, it's, it's-
Yeah, it's foreign.
Yeah.
They've done that before.
It's like the letters are all run together or something.
Why does it do that? Well, ours is, ours is good.
Read it to us, will you?
All right, that takes us to the old white policy. City council welcomes and encourages participation with community members. Please keep in mind that economists must be permit to city business and must adhere to the privacy rules, which means no employee's name may be used. Please not expect action from the council as they view the very concerns. We also request that economists be limited to four minutes. Speakers will be recognized only once. At this time, we ask that anyone, anyone out in the audience who would like to address the council to please step up to the podium and state your name and address. The podium's yours. You like it?
Nope.
Our ass, we're good.
Anything?
Nobody got anything? That takes us to our final motion of the evening.
I'll make a motion, sir.
You'll be very pleased.
Second.
You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pools?